Good evening and welcome to the 1,179th Public Hearing and Regular Meeting of the Livonia City Planning Commission. I wish to inform all interested persons in our audience that for petitions on tonight's agenda, which involve a question of zoning, the Planning Commission will make a recommendation to City Council, and the City Council, after holding their own public hearing, will make the final determination as to whether a petition is approved or denied. The Planning Commission holds the only public hearing on request for preliminary plat and/or vacating petitions. The Commission's recommendation is forwarded to the City Council for the final determination as to whether a petition is accepted or rejected. If a petition requesting a waiver of use or a site plan is denied tonight, the petitioner will have 10 days in which to appeal the decision in writing to City Council. Resolutions adopted by the City Planning Commission will become effective seven days after the date of adoption. Our Planning Commission and professional staff have reviewed each of these petitions upon their filing. The staff has furnished the Commission with both approving and denying resolutions, which the Commission may or may not use depending on the outcome of the proceedings tonight. If our Secretary is ready, please call the roll.
Mrs. Smiley.
Present.
Mrs. McHugh.
Here.
Mr. Bonjero.
Here.
Along as absent, Mr. Ventura.
Is here.
Karen Magno is here. Chairman Wolschow.
Is here, thank you. Also with us tonight, we have Mark Toramina and Stephanie Reese from our Planning Department. In the format of the meeting, we will start by reading off each of the items on our agenda. We'll get some background information from our Planning Staff on the items, and then we'll have the petitioner come forward and speak to the item. And if there's anyone else in the audience wishing to speak for or against an item, they can also come forward when we call for them. So with that, we're going to start with item number one on the public hearing section of our agenda.
Petition 2021-10-01-07 submitted by Kaisem Bazi pursuant to Sections 13.13 and 13.15 of Livonia Vision 21 Zoning Ordinance, requesting to rezone the property at 274805 Mile Road, located on the north side of 5 Mile Road between Inxter and Foshe Avenue in the southeast quarter of Section 13 from NM1 Neighborhood Multifamily to NM2 Neighborhood Multifamily.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. And we did receive a letter from the petitioner asking that this item be tabled to our January 11th meeting to give them some additional time to prepare. Mr. Toramina, is there any other information you wanted to provide?
Just want to point out that the main reason for the tabling is to submit a corrected notice for this item. So they are requesting January 11th, so we'll send out a new notice and the item will be heard on that date.
That's because they were looking for a different zoning classification?
Slightly different, that's correct.
Okay, great. And the petitioner, I believe, is here in our audience. Thank you for being here this evening. Is there anyone in the Commission that has any questions for the petitioner before we move on with this item? I don't see anyone on the Commission requesting to ask you any questions at this point. So with that, given that we have requested a, or we have received a request for this item to be tabled, I think that would be an appropriate motion at this time if someone would like to offer that.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion.
All right. Mr. Karen Magno is making a motion to table this item to January 11th meeting. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Mr. Bonjero. And there is no discussion on tabling motions. If the Secretary is ready, please call the roll.
Karen Magno votes aye. Mr. Bonjero.
Aye.
Mrs. Smiley.
Aye.
Mrs. McHugh.
Aye.
Mr. Ventura.
Aye.
Chairman Wolschow.
Aye. Motion passes. The item has been tabled to our January 11th meeting, and we'll see you, will they be at the study meeting prior to that?
Correct, yes.
Okay, great. So we'll see you at our study and then our regular meeting on the 11th. So, thank you. You're welcome. And that moves us on to number two on our agenda.
Petition 2021-10-02-22 submitted by Century Row, Century 21 Row, requesting waiver use approval pursuant to Section 6.58 of Livonia Vision 21 Zoning Ordinance to construct and operate a vehicle tow yard called Accelerated Towing and Recovery at 34437 Rosati Avenue, located on the west side of Stark Road, just south of the CSX Railroad, in the southwest quarter of Section 28.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Mr. Toramina.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, this is a request to construct and operate a vehicle tow yard at the west end of Rosati Avenue, which is on the west side of Stark Road, just south of the CSX Railroad. Rosati Industrial Park Subdivision was officially created in 2006. This industrial park consists of 15 lots. As you can see, the zoning is M1 light manufacturing. The subject property is described as Lot 8 of Rosati Industrial Park. This lot contains a land area of approximately 31,000 square feet, or roughly seven tenths of an acre. Lot 8 is at the west end of a cul-de-sac. The front lot line along the street measures roughly 136.6 feet, the average width of the lot. At the building line is approximately 165 feet. Lot 8 is surrounded by other industrial zone parcels. The closest residential district is located roughly 155 feet to the south. Vehicle tow yards are restricted to M1 and M2 districts where they are treated as a waiver use. Except for the front yard setback, the ordinance requires that the entire lot area be enclosed with a fence. The site plan for accelerated towing shows a 5,800 square foot building. This would be located near the front of the lot. The fenced-in parking lot would be at the rear and along the north side of the property. Parking lot shows 31 spaces, including one barrier-free space. The minimum required building setback is 50 feet. The plan shows the building with a 35-foot setback, which, previous to the adoption of the Livonia Vision 21 Zoning Ordinance last summer, would have been conforming. Unfortunately, a special setback provision that applied only to industrial parks did not carry over from Ordinance Number 543 to the new zoning ordinance. Section 16.10A of Ordinance Number 543 provided that when an industrial building fronted on an internal road within a park, the front yard shall be at least 60 feet, as measured from the center line of the street. As applied in this case, the building would be conforming under Ordinance Number 543. The Planning Department does intend to amend the current zoning ordinance to include this language, however, because this will take several months to complete, the only options available at this time would be to either seek a variance or move the building back 15 feet. Required parking is based on a ratio of one space for every 500 square feet of building floor area. The proposed facility requires 12 parking spaces that would be available for employees and customers. The facility, as we understand it, would have five employees. The site plan, again, shows 31 parking spaces that would be available. This would be available to employees, customers, for the tow trucks, as well as the recovered vehicles. As specified in the requirements for waiver use approval, the entire parking lot would be completely enclosed with a six-foot-high chain-link fence. The yard's access gate, which is located in the northeast corner, would be constructed out of a six-foot-high black wrought iron-type fencing. Building itself would be constructed out of a combination of both brick and split-faced block. As you can see from the elevation plans, there are windows shown along the front and portions of the side elevations of the building. The rear and the north side would contain overhead doors. The height of the building is shown roughly 22 feet. We believe it's a single-story building, not sure. It's uncertain whether or not it would contain a mezzanine. The floor plan that was submitted with the application shows that the space would include a large shop area. There would be an office, as you can see here, a vehicle prep room, and a restroom. Dumpster area, a dumpster is shown along the west side of the property. This would be fully enclosed. The details show that it would be enclosed with walls that would be six feet in height, constructed out of eight-inch split-faced block. Swing gates would be constructed out of solid corrugated aluminum. For lighting, LED wall packs are shown along the top of the building. These would be the only type of security lights for the site. No light poles are shown. Landscaping plan was provided. It shows four white dogwood trees that would be planted along the front of the, in the right-of-way, as well as arborvitae's along the building and grass. This site would be allowed one wall sign not to exceed 100 square feet in total area. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll be happy to read out the correspondence on this item.
Yes, please.
First is a letter from the Department of Public Works Engineering Division dated November 12th, and it reads, "The existing parcel currently has access to public water main, sanitary sewer, and storm sewer within the Rosati Avenue right-of-way. The developer will need to meet current engineering requirements for the proposed project, including stormwater detention per the latest version of the Wayne County Stormwater Ordinance. It should be noted that the parcel is within an area being investigated for soil and groundwater contamination. As a result, the developer may be required to provide special provisions under the slab of the new structure to protect against vapor intrusion or groundwater interference. Final requirements will not be known until the investigation has been completed, but until that time, the developer may want to contact the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy for more details." That letter is signed by David Lear, Assistant City Engineer. Next, we have a letter from our Livonia Fire and Rescue dated November 11th, indicating that they have no objections to the plans. That letter is signed by Greg Thomas, Fire Marshal. A letter of no objection coming from the Division of Police dated November 18th, and signed by Scott Chapansky, Sergeant of the Traffic Bureau. Next is a letter from the Inspection Department. It's dated November 22nd, and reads, "Pursuant to your request, the above referenced petition has been reviewed and the following is noted. A variance from the Zoning Board of Appeals would be required to maintain the deficient front yard setback. The required minimum front yard setback is 50 feet. This department has no further objections to this petition." That letter is signed by Jerome Hannah, Director of Inspection. Then, a letter of no objection dated November 16th, coming from the Department of Finance, and signed by Connie Campula, Chief Accountant. And lastly, a letter of no objection from the Office of Treasure dated November 15th, and signed by Linda Shield, Treasurer of the City of Livonia. And that is the extended correspondence, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, Mr. Toramina. Do we have any questions for our Planning Staff?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Karen Magno.
Mark, what other junkyards, towing yards have we got in the city right now?
Can only think of two. Livonia Towing is the main tow yard. And then secondarily, Ross Towing was approved on Inxter Road. I'm not sure what the status of that particular tow yard is, but that was approved by the Zoning Board of Appeals some number of years ago.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Karen Magno. Mr. Toramina, maybe this is a question for the petitioner, but how is the public supposed to access the parking spaces if the gate is in front of the parking spaces?
Yeah, so I think we are going to defer that question, pass the buck over to the petitioner. This question came up at the study meeting, and we did pass that along to the owners, and I believe they're prepared to respond to that question this evening.
Okay, great. Well, we'll make sure to ask them. Thank you. If there's no other questions for our Planning Staff, I'll go to our petitioner, who can come forward to our podium, and we'll ask that you start with your name and address for our record.
My name is Terry Seaver. I'm actually the petitioner, an agent with Century 21 Row. I've been working on this subdivision, industrial subdivision, for the last year and a half. My address is 1883 Teakwood, White Lake, Michigan, 48383.
Okay, thank you, sir.
I think the record has me, my business, Century 21 here in Livonia at 6 Mile and Middlebelt, so we're locally run. First of all, the question regarding the access, at the time, I was, at the study session, I wasn't completely sure how to answer that, but the owner of the towing company would be happy to address that. But the simple answer is that their operation is going to run from 8:00 a.m. in the morning until 4:00 o'clock in the afternoon. When they're open, the fence will be open. When they close up and leave, then of course, the fence will be closed. So there was access. There was some discussion about doing a design where the parking spots would be outside, but there really isn't need to do that, and I don't think they want to encourage people coming there and parking. The thing is, because it's such a secluded end of the road, I'm not sure how, it'd probably be a half a mile road at the end of it. It's become a fairly popular lover's lane-type setup, so they don't want to encourage that. With regard to the DEQ issue, Eagle, we've already communicated with them. The Engineering Department has talked to them, and Ron Emeling, who is back here, he's the owner of the property, and he's already built the house, or I mean, a building of almost the exact same design, except his has turned completely different than the one you see. The one you see, we did from left to right, so that we could screen the back as much as possible. He has one on Lot Number 12, and he met the requirements that Eagle was looking for. So there hasn't been any issue, because the footings are above the groundwater and all that kind of stuff. And we believe this is a very good site. Probably from a service standpoint and a planning standpoint, there's probably not enough towing businesses in the community with all the expressways and service. I know I had a personal experience, and trying to get my vehicle was not easy, because the towing company had a second yard that was in, on Telegraph in Redford, and it was very difficult. In the end, they said, "Well, you can come pick it up, we'll push it outside the fence." So I think it'll be helpful for residents that do get a tow, do have an accident. He'll address this, but his business, his primary call, insurance work, things like that, he doesn't do abandoned vehicles. Occasionally, maybe once a year or something, he may get that call from a private owner, but he's not in the business of creating a junkyard and bringing vehicles in and having them sit there for a length of time, or sell spare parts, all that kind of stuff. He's really more into towing. When we had the floods along the expressway, he did have to pick up some vehicles with residents that lived in Livonia. The insurance settlement, all that took maybe 90 days. So he has areas where insurance company has to come in and take a look at the vehicle. They end up totaling it because of the contaminated water in flooded areas on the expressway. So other than that, I think this is a good fit for the city. We've taken care and trying to address the screening part of it. And with that, I'll introduce Mike. Mike is the towing operator, and he'll be happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you, Mr. Seaver. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Michael Fields, and I live at 14310 21 and 1/2 Mile Road, Marshall, Michigan.
Okay. Thank you for coming tonight. And is there anything else you'd like to tell us about your business?
I think Mr. Seaver pretty much covered everything that we do. Once again, I guess we need to reiterate, we are not a salvage yard, we are not a scrapyard. We don't do any of those things, that's not our business. The majority of our business is road service, so changing flat tires, jump stars, fuel delivery. Any vehicles that are going to be on the property are basically designed to be there for a short amount of time, because it's not profitable for our business to store unoperable vehicles. And the owners, when they have an accident or have your vehicle needs to go through a claim, the goal is to get it to a dealership or repair shop as soon as possible, so that they can move forward with their life and be back in their vehicle.
Okay, great, thank you. Let's see if we have any questions from any of our Commissioners for you.
Mr. Chair.
Mrs. Smiley.
Yes, good evening.
Good evening.
So you, like AAA would call you, or how would I know how to call you?
Exactly. We have contracted rates with AAA, Agro, Nation Safe Drivers, probably over 50 different motor clubs that we work for, GM Roadside Assistance, and things of that nature. So a lot of our calls come in through via Towbooks. It's an app that all the towing companies use. And also, we do Google advertising as well. So for example, if you were in a situation and you needed a tow, and you didn't know how to get a tow, a lot of people would just do what's really common, they'll Google "tow truck near me," and a lot of times, we'll come up, and that's another way that we service the citizens.
Okay, and then there was, when we were talking about this plan, they said you could move the building back 15 feet or get a variance. Which, where are you going to go with that?
To be honest with you, I'm...
Let me respond.
Okay.
Go ahead. I'll come back and respond to that.
Okay, and then you said you're only open from 8 till 4?
8 till 4, Monday through Friday.
Monday through Friday?
Yes.
So if I, what happens if I have an accident on Saturday?
Well, that's our office hours, 8 to 4. If you have an accident, we are a 24-hour service. That doesn't mean that our trucks stop running after 4:00. That just means at 4:00, there's no need to tow a vehicle out, because a lot of the facilities that would accept vehicles, they close. So their primary hours are basically 8 to 5. And generally, it takes us 45 minutes to get a car loaded and delivered in a reasonable area. So that's why our hours are 8 to 4. And many dealerships are not open on Saturday, and definitely not on Sunday. So that's why that's our office hours.
So if I was in an accident, I would call you. You wouldn't fix it, but on Monday through Friday, I could come and get my car, or...
Absolutely.
Or my insurance adjuster could look at it.
Exactly, and that's how it's all set.
And then they would take it, you would take it somewhere to be fixed, but not you?
We would take it somewhere to the shop of your choice or your insurance company, wherever they would like it to go. And sometimes vehicles that are unable to be repaired, they will set up with some of the salvage yards, like Copart or IAA, and they will come pick the vehicle up, so that claim will be settled before the vehicle even leaves our facility.
Great, thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Smiley. Any other questions for our petitioner?
I've got some, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Karen Magno.
Do you own the property now, or is this pending an approval to open up a tow yard there?
Yeah, it is pending approval.
Okay. I looked in the, I missed the study session, but I looked in some of the notes here, and you've got a couple yards. You've got a yard out in Redford?
Correct.
And what do you plan to do with that yard?
We will consolidate everything to Livonia. We want all of our business to be in one central location where our trucks are stored, and where we serve. The majority of our work is actually in Livonia, Farmington, and Bloomfield, so it's right in that western cul-de-sac right there, and that's better for our business.
Now, the work that you have, you say the majority of the work you've got, is that based upon where your calls come from? Or do you have contracts with Livonia?
Correct.
Or Farmington Hills?
We do not have any police contracts or anything like that, but the area we service is noted via satellite with Google, so that's how all of our roadside assistance companies know our area. And we have a range in which we work. We have a 20-mile range.
Okay. Wrecked cars, abandoned cars, how do you track them in your yard, so they don't stay there for four, five, six years? How do you know that?
Wrecked car, usually, there's no need to track it, because if it comes through an insurance, an insurance-type claim, the adjuster's notified, usually within 24 hours of the accident, so it's tracked automatically by the owner and the insurance company.
Okay, so let's say someone doesn't have insurance, and we know there's many that don't.
Right.
And they wreck their car on 5 Mile Road, you get the call to come get it.
Correct.
Then what, how do you purge it? How do you get rid of that car down the road when it's in limbo and no insurance?
It's one of three ways that that happens. First, the owner usually wants to redeem their vehicle, so that they can seek repairs. Two, they will forward the title over to us, and then we'll take it over to GLR, which is literally across the street, what would be literally across the street from this location, and it will be dismantled by them. We don't do any dismantling. So that's the two ways. The third way is the longest way, and that's where you file for a title. Well, once it goes into a system, into the database, the state of Michigan database, usually within 30 to 45 days, you obtain, which is a TR-52, and that's application for a title. At that point in time, you either sell the car through auction, or you dispose of it at GLR. Once again, our option would be to dispose of it at GLR.
Okay. How do you treat fluids that leak out of these cars? Once they're wrecked, oil, antifreeze, how do you handle that?
Well, fortunately and unfortunately, by the time the car gets to our yard at the site, it's leaked all its fluids right then and there. So at that point in time, we do clean up the site, because all of our trucks are equipped with floor dry, foam, and mats to recover and secure all those fluids. So once again, once the vehicle gets to our yard, it's empty.
Okay. And how long you been in business?
Been towing now for close to 30 years.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Karen Magno. Mr. Ventura?
I noticed on the floor plan that you provided to us that there's a vehicle prep area in the building. What happens there?
A lot of stuff, like in that area, trucks will be washed or serviced, our own personal trucks. We are not open to the public. We are not looking to do any repairs or anything like to public vehicles.
So that's strictly for your own?
Yes, that's strictly for us.
And you're not doing any repairs?
Absolutely not.
Okay. How many vehicles do you pick up on a weekly basis, do you think?
Pick up and house, I'd say on an average week, probably two to five at the most. Normally, anything that comes in, it pretty much goes out the next day. For example, if there was an accident and it happened after hours, we picked it up. By the next day, the insured or the insurance company either wants one or two things to happen. They want the claims adjuster to come evaluate the damages, to see if it's repairable or total. And two, the owner wants the vehicle to be repaired as soon as possible, because many of these cars, people are still paying a car payment and insurance. So everyone's goal is to get the vehicle moved expeditiously.
Are there instances where you pick up a car and it doesn't come to your facility? It goes directly to a...
Lots of times, that's exactly what happens. Let's say, for example, if an accident occurs, 12:30, 1:00 in the afternoon, there's ample amount of time for that vehicle to go to a dealership or repair facility, and lots of times, that's exactly what will happen.
Great, thank you. I guess a question for Mr. Seaver. I don't understand your role here, sir. Are you the developer of the property? Are you going to own the building? How do you fit in this?
I'm the agent that was involved in putting together the offer to purchase, and I represent the fellow selling the property and is going to build it. So I just represented, brought...
Okay, so when you say you've been working on this for a while as an agent to put the deal together, not in terms of...
Oh, I'm sorry. What I was referring to was the industrial subdivision, the total 16, 15, 16 lots, selling them one at a time.
Okay.
So there's other buildings that are in the process, have been submitted to engineering for building. This one, because it's a towing, was a waiver required. The other ones are not required. They meet the ordinance, and so there's no reason to be here for those.
Great.
But I have background in local government process and stuff, so as an agent, I get involved and help the owners move through the process.
I understand. Okay, thank you. I got it. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Ventura. And Mr. Seaver, was there another question that you were going to answer?
I want to, yeah, I want to address the setback. I kind of surprised Mark threw it at him tonight, but from my experience and what knowledge I have, this site plan was approved with full engineering and building envelopes and everything, back in, like he said, 2006. At that point in time, site plan was approved for specific setbacks, which I think called for 60-foot from the center of the road. So my question will be to the city attorney, is that that should have been grandfathered in, particularly since the owner of that site plan and the property built the road, put the utilities in, and built a couple buildings. So it would probably be unreasonable, like any subdivisions, to start moving the setbacks once a development has started. So if I'm wrong on that, and that's not agreed upon from a grandfathered-in standpoint, then we would most likely go take that information and go for a variance. We prefer to keep the building where it's at, because it allows the additional 10 feet to the back of the lot, and it doesn't affect any aesthetics or any type of sight distance and, you know, eyesore and stuff like that. We've done a great deal of job. There was at one time a proposed site plan conceptual, where the building went a long way, so the frontage was only 58 feet. So we redesigned it so that we'd actually have 100 feet of frontage. So that was just my point. We will pursue it with whichever makes, whichever we have to do in terms of it, but...
Sure, sure, that makes sense. I think we... I think we understand kind of how things came about to where we're at right now, given our ordinance change that happened recently, and we'll do what we need to do to rectify that.
Right, typically, ordinances, when they're amended and adjusted, they don't go retroactive back ten or fifteen years, so that would be rather unusual, but whatever we need to do to get through it is what we'll do.
Sounds great, thank you, thank you. Is there any other questions for our petitioner, or the representatives? Mr. Torreman?
If I may ask a question, Mr. Fields. Mr. Fields, do you, do you either have or intend to have any vehicle deal or license in connection with your business?
Absolutely not. It's not necessary for my part of this. I do not plan to apply for, I think it's an A, B, and C salvage license, dismantle, and all that stuff. I'm not interested in that.
So when a vehicle goes to auction, is that, if you, if you obtain title to the vehicle, then how is it that you sell that vehicle then? I understand if you bring it over to GLR and go that route.
Right, that's what we do every time. We do not have the desire or capability to rebuild or repair or part out vehicles. It takes away from our business. We have a limited amount of time to serve our customers and do what we got in business to do, which is towing and roadside, so I can answer that question firmly and assure you that we are...
No, I appreciate that.
Yeah, we're not, we're not looking for a salvage license or anything. I don't even like the look of salvaged cars on our property. The quicker they go, the better.
So no, no, no Class A, no Class B?
No.
No wholesale?
No.
No salvage license?
None of that, no.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Torreman. Any other questions? Mr. Karen Magna?
You might have said this in the, in the planning, study session, or even earlier today, and I might not have heard you, but is the plan for this whole yard to be paved or concrete?
Oh, let's, it was asphalt, right? So the main lot here would be asphalt, and everything, well, really speaks for itself. The turf areas are shown in green, building in this brown color, and then the balance would be, would be asphalt, I believe, with concrete curbing completely around the parking lot.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Smiley?
Yeah, one more thing. We talked about that fence, that red line is not the fence. There's, you know, the red line?
Yeah, right.
Okay, what's the story with that?
Is that showing setbacks, or...
Yeah, the red line shows two, two different things. It shows the property boundaries.
Okay.
On this outer perimeter. Then the inside line shows the setback requirements under the old ordinance, and then the fence line, actually, there's a six-foot-high masonry wall for this twenty feet approximately from this point forward, or to the property line, extending west to the northwest corner of the parking lot. That fence then carries down to the southwest corner of the parking lot, and then ties into the southwest corner of the building here. So that's the fence location.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that from the study.
Yeah, and I will, I will point out, this, while this is a nice feature to consider, this masonry wall, it does present a vision, a problem with vision, so a vehicle parked here backing up would not be able to see an incoming vehicle coming on there, so we usually, in these cases, we have to step that wall down to a maximum height of three feet. That's just something that you should consider.
Okay, good point.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smiley. Any other questions? That was a good question about the red line, it's questionable there. Mr. Ventura?
Mr. Chairman, can you talk, are you going to own the building?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great, thank you.
Good question. Any other questions? If not, I just have a couple brief questions, since I wasn't at the study meeting. So you, just to understand, you were talking about different scenarios in which you have, that you keep vehicles for different lengths of time, and you said that the longest process was if you needed to obtain title for a vehicle.
Correct.
So a situation where someone has a vehicle that's not insured, it's not really worth much of anything, and for some reason, you need to impound it or tow it, and that person's probably not going to come back for it, because it would cost more to get it out of tow than it would be to even justify the cost of the vehicle. Does that happen very often?
It happens, but to alleviate that issue, what we do, and a lot of other tow yards, we offer them basically return of the title, so we don't pursue any legal actions, and then in many cases, people come down, they give you their title, which allows you to take it to GLR, and then they scrap it at that point in time, which saves a lot of time. I don't have to apply for a TR-52 and put it into lean, and I can tell you, that happens more times than not, because when someone feels that they can be eliminated of a potential debt, they usually take advantage of that opportunity.
Okay, so you've worked with that situation? Okay, great, that's interesting. The other question is, do you do any repossession?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
That is not worth putting my guys or my trucks in jeopardy, it's just, it's not a good thing.
Definitely.
And the amount of insurance that you have to carry to do that type of work is ungodly.
Sure, it's a very risky business, and it's also potentially risky for your property as well, if people try to get their vehicles back. Okay, any other questions from anybody? If not, I think we've exhausted our questions. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak for or against this item? I don't think there is anyone else here, so with that, is there anything else, Mr. Fields, that you'd like to tell us before we make our decision?
I think we've pretty much covered everything. If you have any other questions that you may think of, I'm more than willing to answer.
Okay, sounds good, thank you. Let's see what happens here in, with the motion. Is there anyone wishing to make a motion on this item?
Mr. Chair.
Mrs. Smiley.
It's my evening to talk. I'll make an approving resolution that the request to construct and operate a vehicle tow yard accelerated towing and recovery at three four, four three seven, Rosati Avenue, is hereby approved, subject to city council approval and the following conditions: that the architectural site plan identified as sheet number DA two point O, dated October
the twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-one, prepared by Arista Design Incorporated, is hereby approved and shall be adhered to; that subject to the determination by the inspection department, the petitioner may be required to obtain a variance from the zoning board of appeals for deficit building, front yard setback, and any conditions related thereto; three, that all parking spaces except the required handicap space shall be double striped at ten feet wide by twenty feet in length as required; that the maximum number of vehicles parked on the site at any given time, including the employees, customers, tow trucks, and recovered vehicles, shall not exceed thirty-one vehicles; that the landscape plan identified as sheet number DA three point O, dated October the twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-one, prepared by Arista Design, is hereby approved and shall be adhered to; that all disturbed lawn areas shall be sodded in lieu of hydroseeding; that underground sprinklers are to be provided for all landscaped and sodded areas, and all planted materials shall be installed to the satisfaction of the inspection department, and thereafter permanently maintained in a healthy condition; that the exterior elevations plan identified as sheet number DA dash four point O, dated October the twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-one, prepared by Arista Design Incorporated, is hereby approved and shall be adhered to; that all rooftop mechanical equipment shall be concealed from public view on all sides by screening that shall be of a compatible character, material, and color to the other exterior materials on the building; that any pole-mounted light fixtures shall not exceed twenty feet in height, and shall be aimed and shielded to minimize stray trespassing across property lines and glaring into adjacent roadways; that trash dumpster area and the enclosure gate shall be constructed in accordance with the dumpster enclosure details as shown on the approved site plan. The only conforming signage is approved with this petition, and any additional signage shall be separately submitted for review and approval by the zoning board of appeals. The specific plans referenced in this approving resolution shall be submitted to the inspection department at the time the building permits are applied for, and pursuant to section thirteen point one three of the Livonia Vision Twenty-One zoning ordinance, this approval is valid for a period of one year only, from the date of the approval by the city council, and unless a building permit is obtained, this approval shall be null and void at the expiration of said period.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
All right, we have a motion by Mrs. Smiley, a long one, and support by Mrs. McHugh. Is there any discussion on the motion to approve? If there's no discussion, secretary, please call the roll.
Mrs. Smiley.
Aye.
Mrs. McHugh.
Aye.
Mr. Bonjero.
Aye.
Mr. Ventura.
Aye.
Karen Magna votes no. Chair Wilshaw.
Votes aye. Motion passes. We'll go to city council with an approving recommendation. We wish you luck with your project.
Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you. That takes care of the public hearing section of our agenda. We now move on to the miscellaneous section of our agenda, item number three.
And that is the approval of the minutes of the one thousand one hundred and seventy-eight public hearing and regular meeting, held by the planning commission on November ninth, two thousand and twenty-one.
And I show that all members are present, with the exception of Mrs. McHugh. Is there a motion to approve?
Show moved.
And supported by?
Support.
We have a motion to approve by Mr. Ventura, supported by Mr. Bonjero. If there's no objection, I think we can safely show five, with Mrs. McHugh abstaining. No objections heard, so we'll note that. And that takes us to the end of our meeting. Is there any other business to come before the planning commission this evening? If not, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
I love you, Chair.
That's by Mrs. Smiley, supported by?
I support.
By Mrs. McHugh, again, and again, if there's no objection, I think we can safely show six on this one, to adjourn our meeting. No objections noted, so we are at the end of our meeting. I would like to thank our Livonia television staff for providing this meeting to our community, and with no further business, we are going to adjourn our meeting this evening at seven forty-three PM, and wish a good night to Livonia.